Councilmember Orr.
Here.
Councilmember Wilson.
Here.
Councilmember Woodall, here. Please stand to the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Public presentations. This is the time for persons who wish to address the council on any matter not on this agenda and over which the council has jurisdiction. Each person who addresses the council shall not make personal, impertinent, slanders, or profane remarks to any member of the council's staff or general public. Any person who makes such remarks or who utters loud, threatening, personal, or abusive language, or engages in any other disorderly conduct which disrupts, disturbs, or otherwise impedes the orderly conduct of any council meeting shall, at the discretion of the presiding officer or majority of the council, be barred from further audience before the council during this meeting. As such, a dialogue with the council or staff is not allowed under the Ralph and Brown Act. Items requiring council actions not listed on this agenda may be placed on the next regular agenda for consideration as the council directs, unless a finding is made by at least two-thirds of the council that the item came up after the agenda was posted and is of an urgency nature requiring immediate action. Please limit comments to a maximum of three minutes. Does anyone like to address the council? Please come forward. Please state your name and address.
Joyce McHenry, 483 Second Avenue. And I'd like to ask the council to please go on the agenda, revisit the Second Avenue project between Davis and Columbus. Is there anything I have to say to get that done?
You're saying it.
All right, well, next meeting is the seventeenth. Is it possible to know that it's going to be on the agenda?
I would say it is not possible to know that absolutely. Because when staff looks at all their stuff.
All right. Well, that's all I really want is to be on the agenda next meeting. Okay?
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Hi, my name's Kim Jones. I live at 1109 Highland Court. And I'm here to ask the council to reconsider fees that are due for earthquake damaged homes. I've got a large bill that needs to be addressed. And I just feel that these fees are, you know, very high for Humboldt County. So I'm wanting to know if there's any way we can reduce those fees. Not from the future, but now for the people. I mean, the people here in Riedel, the residents, have gone through a very hard time with earthquake damaged homes. And the very large fees for getting them fixed, for one. And second, the fees that the city is charging the residents for permits. So I'm just asking if it's possible that you guys could consider reducing those fees? And why are they so high compared to Fortuna, Eureka, you know, other places? So I'm hoping that you guys can address that. And is that something that needs to go on agenda? Or is that something that could get answered right away?
It's not something we can answer and we can't have, you know, a lot of dialogue about it. But we will, you know, it's been addressed, but we will talk to the staff and see, you know, what we can do.
Okay.
In the meantime, but.
Okay, so is that something you reach out to the resident that's requesting that information? Or does that have to go into the next meeting? Or how does that work?
That is something that would have to come to the council. The decision has been made previously. I mean, it's been addressed. Citizens have come forward. We've talked. We've had a discussion. So it would have to make its way back, so.
Okay.
May I add something? So the council cannot discuss it because it's not agendaized discussion. However, there is support available. We encourage everybody looking for disaster support services to contact the disaster case management hotline. And I can give you that number after the meeting.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Then one else?
I would like to.
Fred Cogdon.
For those of you that don't know me, I'm Frederick Brackenridge. Hi, you know, geez. So, you know, it was quite the rapture of a winter we had last year and then ended up in Riedel. And no where I'd be without you guys, you know. I come from a long line of prominent politicians throughout the history of our county. And that would include the youngest vice president ever, not a direct descendant, but we're really close. And he was the only Democrat commissioned officer in the Union Army. Vice President John Cable Brackenridge. His uncle was Robert Jefferson Brackenridge, Abraham Lincoln's Republican chairman and minister. And it's a long, long history in America of Democrat, Republican. And we're all phenomenal. But there's a, it's kind of my attention that Madam Mayor won the Democrat of the Year Award. Am I correct on this? And something is coming to my possession that I'm looking for somebody to pass it on to. And at the St. John McAnus Inn in Ferndale, I came into the possession of a wolfelting in Barack Obama. Don't want everybody else to hear and see this. And so I am going to, since you were kind enough to give me a ride home. And we had this conversation in your car, I'm going to hang on to the rough draft.
Okay.
Never give up. Never give up, you know, follow your dreams. Make it to where you want to be. And we thank you for being here. Congratulations.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak to the council?
Hi, Jim Wolf, Great Panger Street. I just wanted to put information out there that tomorrow there's going to be a nationwide test of the emergency broadcasting system. And I think it's going to be at like eleven forty in the morning for us. Every cell phone, TV, radio is going to go off and just scare the bejeans out of people. Because I don't know about you, but I've been having the app on the phone going off all the time. So I'm already on edge. So I'm trying to warn people ahead of time so that when it does go off, we're not, oh crap, this is earthquake. So anyway, I just want to put that information out there for you guys.
That's so awesome. Thank you. As it were, definitely. Are there any, anyone else?
Oh, absolutely.
Hi.
Hi.
My other bourbon rest. I'm a resident of Riedel and.
Your name?
In Lena, Lasca. And I have been working with the recovery group for over six months now. And I've been talking to a lot of different residents. I'm also born and raised in Humboldt County. And I saw that, you know, you guys are going to be having a presentation today. So I read over that part of the packet and some questions that I think that you guys should ask them is.
Okay, can I stop?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
So what you're talking about is actually agendaized, so you can't talk about it until it comes up on the agenda items. I'm sorry.
Okay, can I at least say that I would hope that we can maybe find other funding and other ways to give residents some assistance from our council, from our city, from wherever we can. Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address the council? Are there any handbrakes? Are there any emails? Then we will close public presentations and move on to the consent calendar. Is there anyone on the council who would like to remove item from the consent calendar?
I'd like to remove item number six from the consent calendar.
Okay, and is there anyone in the audience who would like to? Then is there a motion to approve items one through five and seven?
I still move.
Do you have a motion? Is there a second? Motion carries five zero. Mayor for Tim.
I just want to go on the record and thank you for your service, wastewater superintendent Taylor. You've done a really, really good job and I just, I didn't want you to leave here without somebody thanking you. And this past winter was horrific for a lot of reasons for all of us, but you were out there in the dark, in the pouring rain, a lot of you were. And I just really want that noted that while we were all just hoping to get another shower, you know, there were people out on the streets in the middle of the night in those horrible storms babysitting our infrastructure. And I think these are the things that maybe we don't always think about in disastrous times. And that's it. I just wanted to say thank you. And now I move to approve item number six through the second.
Do we have a motion? Does anyone else want to say anything? Okay.
It's on the.
Motion carries five zero. City manager reports and staff update, page seventy-nine in our packets.
Thank you, Mayor Garne and members of the council. Travis Sandborn, our finance director, reminded me that we need to let people know that we do have an auction currently ongoing for surplus city equipment. And that surplus auction is linked on the website and that's at gutdeals.com. So you can find it there by searching, but we have a couple pieces of equipment, some of which is back in front of the rear parking lot that we're currently doing an auction for. And everybody is encouraged, if you're interested in the equipment, to put in a bid for it.
There's starting bid.
There is, but we are into the auction and so most of the equipment, with the exception of the grant winners, is over the base bid amount. So it is, every day there's new bidders. We did hold a mandatory three bid meeting on a gateway landscaping project with prospective contractors. Those bids came through today. We did get one bid and we will be working with the ad hoc committee and bringing that back to the council potentially at a special meeting. To be determined if we need to schedule that to keep that project moving forward. Other than that, there's been quite a bit going on since our last meeting ended up being canceled. But we've been doing a lot of job advertisement, recruitings, working on Eagle River Trail project and ADA compliance in that arena. Also meeting, continued meetings with Cal OES on earthquake disaster recovery. Some of the projects are going to be quicker and easier to roll out and others are going to take multiple years to roll out. So we thank them for coming in person and taking some additional tours of the damaged sites. And with that, I will just mention in the staff report, there is a new section of the staff report, starting on page eighty-three, and that's called the code enforcement section, which details everything from vehicle abatement to some more traditional nuisance code enforcement cases. And so that should be regularly appearing either every other week or every other meeting or every meeting in the continuing future. So with that, I'm happy to answer and staff's available to answer any questions the council may have.
Thank you, City Manager. Thank you for putting that new section in the staff report. Mayor for Tim?
No questions. Thank you. Chief, it looks like you guys have been pretty busy.
Yes.
And I'm honest with you. And Tell Me, thank you for putting in this. And Chief, you've done a good job. All of you are doing a good job. And Tell Me, I wish you in the best, because we all wish you in the best.
That's it. Thank you. House member Orr?
No questions.
House member Wild Wilson?
No questions.
I have no questions. Any questions you want? Any hand raised? Email? Thank you, staff. Thank you for everything you guys do. You're awesome staff and we're lucky to have you. Tell Me, we appreciate everything you've done as well for us. Now, special presentations. Humboldt Area Foundation and Wild Rivers Community Foundation on Resiliency and Recovery in the Ill River Valley following December twentieth twenty-two and for cardio earthquakes, page eighty-five in our packets.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor Garne and members of the council. But we do have, it looks like, some handouts to the additional PowerPoint. And I got a copy here, but if anybody in the public would like one, that would be, that would be good. We will try, Rosa, to go ahead and pull this.
Okay. Do you all have coffee? Thanks. I think here, if anybody wants to check them out on the range.
So just briefly, I will provide an introduction. So the Humboldt Area Foundation, Wild Rivers Community Foundation has been an important partner in the earthquake response and recovery efforts from day one. They have been involved in a lot of the preparation work and continued preparation work for disasters and community organizations getting these things mobilizing as well as also channeling film project donations. And it's an absolutely critical hub for the earthquake recovery effort. And just some quick numbers that I think demonstrate that there have been some improvements. It's been a long six months. It's been a very difficult process. But we've gone from sixty-four red tagged structures in the city of Riedel. That includes some apartment complexes, mobile unit complexes and whatnot. Forty-five of those red tags have been cleared. So now we're at nineteen, twenty of these red tag structures. So there has been a significant amount of progress. The yellow tags certainly need a lot more work. Two hundred and fifty-seven were identified post-earthquake and about fifty of those have cleared. But I think just from that standpoint alone, there has been progress. I know at times it seems like maybe there isn't a whole lot of progress going on or a lot of it's behind the scenes. But this is a presentation that Humboldt Area Foundation wanted to provide here to the council. Again, they're incredibly important partners with us. So we have, I believe, Alin Biese via Zoom, Amy Jester, Linda Sandsbury, Jared Patroski here as well as many other community partners in this recovery effort, which again is going to be a long-term recovery effort. We still have a long ways to go. And I just really can't say enough about the team, all voluntary organizations stepping forward to fill in the gaps here in the community and do the best that we can, knowing that the federal government, you know, has only had a very, very limited response to this emergency. So with that, I'll go ahead and introduce the team and thank them for taking this.
All right. Thank you for being here. Welcome.
Thank you. Yeah, it's our immense pleasure to have the opportunity to come here and talk with all of you today. Mayor Garne, council members and staff of the city of Riedel. I am Amy Jester. I'm the Director of Policy Advocacy and Civic Leadership with Humboldt Area Foundation and the Wild Rivers Community Foundation. And as Kyle noted, we're here talking today about the foundation's support for earthquake response and recovery. And I'm joined also, as Kyle noted, by our Senior Program Officer, Ally Lee, who I believe is joining us via Zoom. Is that right, Ally? She'll possibly be presenting some of these.
Yes, I have Zoom sound, but no Zoom camera.
Okay, all right, excellent. So we will roll with that. And then also joined by Jared Patroski, who's our Director of Marketing and Communications. And then Linda Sandsbury, Project Manager with the organization. So thanks again for the opportunity to be here. So just a little bit about the Humboldt area. I should back up and just say that we are incredibly grateful for the ongoing leadership that all of you have provided through emergency immediate response, thinking about and designing for and moving along with the recovery process, which is significant and a really long road. So just want to acknowledge all of you for your incredible commitment to the community and acknowledging that there are many organizations and community leaders, in addition to you all as well, many of whom are in this room, that have done so much to support the community through this really challenging time. So thank you to everybody for your roles there. Just a little bit about the Humboldt Area Foundation and Wild Rivers Community Foundation. We've been around since the early seventies. We're Humboldt, Delmore and Trinity Counties in California and Curry County in Southern Oregon. And our mission is to support thriving, just equitable and healthy region for all. And if we can go to the next slide, please, that would be fantastic. A little bit about our role and community foundation's role in disasters is really about filling in gaps where other resources, where also the government is not able to respond for whatever reason. Our job is to really help connect community leaders and organizations that are working on response to each other, to other resources as well. And to also advocate for our region in partnership with community leaders and organizations to ensure that government outside of our communities know what needs are here, be another voice that's joining local government and organizations and amplifying needs of our communities. And also to raise up those needs to philanthropic organizations outside the area and larger philanthropies as well. Additionally, we established the Disaster Response and Resilience Fund, which my colleague Jared here is going to talk a little bit more about. And that Disaster Response and Resilience Fund is activated immediately upon disaster to be able to get resources out the door immediately. We were making grants on the second day after the earthquake hit and to continue to provide support through response as well as recovery. I'll also make a note, and Linda will be talking briefly about this, that we are engaged in disaster preparedness as well. So really being part of COADS and supporting COADS across our four candidate service area and doing advocacy with state and federal agencies and our electeds about how we can ensure that there's an improved response to rural communities after a disaster hits. With that, I'll turn it over to Jared to talk a little bit about the disaster fund.
Right. Thank you very much, Amy, and thank you, everybody, for hosting us and for being here. We'll get on the next slide. I'd like to talk us a little bit about the Disaster Response and Resilience Fund, how it was established and what it does in a disaster. So we set up the DIRF, as we call it internally, D R R F. In two thousand twenty-one, on the heels of a devastating wildfire season, we had been able to support response to wildfires through different funds, different grant making organs that we have. But we really decided internally we needed a dedicated fund that was nimble and flexible and that could respond at a moment's notice to these kinds of things. So that's why we created the Disaster Response and Resilience Fund. It serves Humboldt, Trinity, Delmore and Curry County in Southern Oregon. And it's really designed to respond to both natural and man-made disasters. So in that time, we helped respond to COVID events. We responded to wildfires, winter storms and some man-made things. And of course, the earthquake that we had back in December. I think right at the start, I should say that all donations that come into the DIRF are actually, zero fees are charged on those. So any individual donor who makes a gift or any philanthropy that makes a gift to us under ten thousand dollars is not charged an administrative fee. Over ten thousand dollars or will be a fee. I know there was some confusion and some rumors that have been going around, heard from some community members about some misunderstanding how those fees are leveraged. But understand that under ten thousand dollars are just no fees levied at all. And in the time since we've had this fund established since two thousand twenty-one, we've actually been able to make over a hundred and fifty grants. I think the number right now is a hundred and fifty-two, although we had a meeting recently to do some more grant payments. That number's probably gone up. But it totals about three point two eight million dollars in the community through the good work of donors and philanthropic partners. And we can just jump to the next slide. We have outlined a couple of the grants we've made recently in response to the earthquake here. So you can take a look both at the packet and on the screens here, just going, as Amy mentioned, on the second day after the earthquake, the twenty-third. We were already making money out the doors, some of the first recipients for Humboldt made to make sure that they had funding to bring food trucks down to Riedel and Scotia and other surrounding areas to help feed folks and also get hotel vouchers and motel vouchers into people's hands in case their residents are in some way uninhabitable. And then you can see the work has continued through February, March, April, May and September. We've been continuously supporting different organizations, including the Arcata House Partnership, to whom we granted three hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars to help create the disaster case management program that they're operating. Another highlight grant there under April twenty twenty-three is three hundred and sixty thousand dollars to the Hope Crisis Response Network, which was designed to help respond to the construction needs of homeowners occupied and homes damaged by the quake. There are some more details about that. If you want to dig deeper into how the DIRF works, I will point you to page eleven and twelve in the back of the packet here. It's really the fine grain detail in case you want to get down to that level. But for now, I just wanted to share basically why we designed the DIRF, how it works, and then point out some of the highlight work that we've done in the past. I should also note that the DIRF isn't actually made up of any government money. It's all money from individual donors and philanthropies. So we really rely on the kindness and the charitable giving of others to help make this fund possible. And then the recipient organizations, we do have limitations. We can't grant individuals out of the DIRF, but we do grant to organizations, governments, tribal entities and others that are in support of the community. And then those folks are actually not required to report on what they've done for a year. So they have a year to do their good work and then get back to us with a grant report that includes sort of activities and impact. So that's a quick overview of the DIRF. I know it's a little bit complex. Philanthropy always is when you dig into it. But some of the work that we've also supported has been with the Long Term Recovery Group and some COADS. And I know Linda has a couple slides. She wanted to talk about that with you folks. So you have my time.
Thank you. Good evening, council. Mayor Garne. Hello, public. Sorry. Hi. So just a little bit of explanation about the Long Term Recovery Group, if we could go to the next slide. Thank you. So the Long Term Recovery Group was established as part of the best practices for disaster recovery and resilience. And this model is based on what we've learned from our philanthropic partners about the best practices in other communities, supporting community after disaster. It was formed due to a lack of federal emergency agency funding, FEMA funding. There's community need, including a lot of unmet need in the community, just a lot of general things that kind of slipped through the cracks. So, you know, what was available in terms of funding. It is supported by our Disaster Response and Resilience Fund funding, or the DIRF, as we say. And as stated before, this is the best practice for disaster recovery and philanthropy. And so, and I apologize, actually, I'm relatively new to the Long Term Recovery Group. I was here at the beginning when the earthquake happened in December. And then I recently rejoined emergency response. So I do have some gaps of knowledge that my colleague Ally Lee would be able to provide a little better here. So the Long Term Recovery Groups are tasked with addressing individual needs. And we do go through a variety of different committees. And if you want to go to the next slide. So this is the anatomy of the disasters, basically the stages, including the initial disaster recovery, which is where, you know, we come in at the beginning and do assessments and get money out the door as quickly as possible for what is necessary, as we see on the ground, as established by some of our program members and other members of our team. And then there's ongoing disaster response. It's recovery begins. And then we move towards a long-term disaster resilience. So what have we learned from this experience? And it's been really interesting. Unfortunately, we have had ongoing disasters in our extended region, including wildfires north of here. We were able to bring some of the things we learned from this experience in Ryo-Dell to our community members up in Trinity and Curry Counties, and, excuse me, Delmore Counties. So it's been a learning process for all of us. We're really learning a lot. So, next slide. Okay, so the COAD versus the Long-Term Recovery Group, right? Okay, so COADS, also known as BOADS, are community organizations active in disaster. And so these are a, these are a coalition of many different community groups and philanthropic organizations. So they focus on big picture community during response and recovery. And then outside of recoveries, you know, we're looking at preparedness, particularly those who are vulnerable in our communities. So Humboldt Area Foundation, the Wild Rivers Community Foundation helped stand up and co-add during the first days of the Ryo-Dell earthquake. And it was kind of, Andy, would you say it was kind of a beta test? We were just talking about getting it going, and then this happened, and here it went, right?
It was activated.
It was activated, right? The Long-Term Recovery Group, which is one of the things we're talking about tonight, that's formed during the recovery stage. We're going to talk about that a little more in the next slide. I don't want to read all the text on here, but if you want to know the next slide, I'll tell you a little more about that. Even the text. Okay, so the thing I want you to know about the Long-Term Recovery Group is it's made up of a lot of different community partners right here in Humboldt County. If you are, if you are a member of the Long-Term Recovery Group, if I know there are a few of you out here who want to raise your hand. Yeah, yeah, thank you. Okay. So every week, we are meeting on a variety of things. So we're talking about unmet needs in our community, and these can be anything from people who need their water heaters replaced, to people who are struggling with accessing USDA funding and need accelerated case management. And that's the services that Changing Tides Family Services and the Arcata House Partnership provides. So that case management line, if you call that, you'll be directed to someone who can help you navigate all that stuff. I realize I'm speaking a little bit off the cuff here. I'm doing my best. Ally, I hope you approve. So these do work in coalition with some groups outside of our region, including the Hope Crisis Response Network and Habitat for Humanity. They have the construction experience that we of the Long-Term Recovery Group may not necessarily have. So they're providing some oversight of that. The Hope Crisis Response Network, which was a recipient of some funding along with the Arcata House Partnership and other groups on here, they're providing support for the Long-Term Recovery Group, which are all of these committee agencies on here, by doing things like offering case management software, training. They can loan equipments and tools. They can provide safety gear and PPE for labor and volunteers. And they also offer a fee-free pass through funding for unmet needs committee approvals. So again, we can't hand out money to individuals like we don't grant to individuals, but we can grant to nonprofits and other community groups who can then give that money where it needs to go.
Just a couple of notes. Ally, who wasn't, is just having the challenge with voice and video. Just wanted to make sure that we also share that in terms of the Long-Term Recovery Group, that's really, in addition to what Amanda has shared about it being a practice that philanthropy supports, it's really a model that the Emergency Office of Emergency Services at the state level identifies as an important part of the recovery process. And also really just want to acknowledge that we're here sharing about some work that the Humboldt Area and Wild Rivers Community Foundation has funded and supported and been part of, and really also want to acknowledge that there are many other entities that are also making grants, supporting financially, engaging in the process, including the county, the North West Grant Making Partnership, and its different funding partners, and of course, the organizations that were referenced up on the screen there. So that will stop and see if you all have any questions. We can go to our final slide. That's it. Yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Of course, I'd like to say thank you for everything that you guys have done. You were, you were here like immediately. The next day, you activated the COAD. You stepped up. Every, everything that we could, you know, ask for, you tried your best, if it was in your realm to do. And probably a few things that were, were outside of what you do, you tried to help. You've been really amazing, and we really truly appreciate what you've done. And that you're still actively here, actively doing, actively trying your best to help the community is greatly appreciated.
Thank you so much for that, Mayor Barnes. And we, and just in terms of COAD, we didn't actually like activate the COAD, but we're a partner with COAD and a member of the Humboldt County COAD, and so supported the leaders that did activate COAD. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
I would love to reiterate all the thanks. Sometimes thank you doesn't feel adequate. But I'll turn out to talk in circles, trying to find the right words over how appreciative we are. It is easy sometimes, as a member of this community, as the city manager was saying, saying, "Well, I don't really know what's going on in progress. Must have stopped." And so I'm glad you guys are here for a lot of reasons, but partly because progress hasn't stopped. And I think that getting that out there to the community is really important, too. There are a lot of people working really, really hard to help us, to help you. And we're very grateful and very, very lucky to have an organization like you and like that list up on the screen. And I know the list is even longer than what was up on the screen. So even though it's not adequate, thank you.
Allison Wilson?
I'd like to thank you for all the work you've done, and we look forward to working with you in the future.
Not feeling bad at all? The same as Amanda. Thank you so much. And I'm so glad you brought this to me today tonight, because we tend to forget there's still things going on, you know, that we're not aware of like we weren't at first. And it'd be even good for some people that are watching on, you know, TV, watching this meeting, that we can probably help explain to them to some of the things that they don't realize that's going on. So thank you very much.
Allison Or?
Thank you for me as well, and looking forward to seeing the help continue, because I know it doesn't seem like it, but there still are a lot of people out there that are struggling with fees and all the other things associated with getting their houses back.
And can you raise what the staff, you know, some community member wants to, you know, that didn't see it, did the presentation, and they really, because this is really...
Yeah, Kyle, we definitely have the PPE app, and I have, we've also printed some reports that we made, sort of a slick version of this same presentation, or a version.
You know, we're going to ask the community if they have any questions? Yeah, definitely.
Yeah, this is the right thing.
Birthday with that.
I was excited.
Your name again?
Angelina.
Angelina. Thank you.
Thanks. So yeah, I just feel like, you know, that presentation was great, and I thank you. Like, I am very thankful of every bit of help that I get from them. It just sounds like that you guys really lack a lot of knowledge of what the experience has been like from us as a community member applying with them. And I can just tell you right now, I can't even count how many, what, over six months of me doing the same thing over and over and over and over, for just a hot water heater, for something very, very, very small financially. And we're not talking about the greater damage. And the last time I had a conversation, I was told only $5,000 or less is being approved for that unmet needs committee. So yeah, there's 19 homes in Ryo-Dell that are red tagged still that are unmet, and they're not even on that list. So when I looked at this stuff, you know, one, there's never been a contractor to come out and give anybody an estimate of how much the damage is, to give us any kind of idea of financially, how much is it going to cost to get all the homes up to what they need to be. So we have no baseline number to know, and just getting bids after bid after bid. And I feel like I called every local company and wasted their time to drive out to my home for us to not even go through and work with them. And it's just really disappointing. And I'm like, sorry to have to call you again. I'm finally now getting to it, and it's just kind of discouraging. And then it's also hard, because you don't know what direction to get other assistance, whether it's a private loan, whether it's equity on your home, whether it's the SBA, which was also, you know, very difficult for people as well. I think I've applied five times for the USDA grant, which was also not on this list. And I haven't heard back whether my application was even accepted, approved. Not even if they received it, nothing. And then all I got back today was that they're waiting for corrections. I have no idea what that means. I don't know how much the dollar amount is worth. I don't know even what they applied for, because it's so much out of my hand. No, I don't even know what's going on anymore. And it's to the point where I'm like, hey, it does not need to be this complicated. And they give me a list of contractors. It's all big corporations. They're not even local. And so I think we need to scale, we need to take what we have and scale back and be a little more transparent and really focus on some of these. Like, I know I've made it very clear to the people I'm working with that I'm not red tagged or yellow tagged, but I haven't had heat in my home since the earthquake. I have no heat. I went through the snowstorm, no heat in my home. So I'm dealing with spot heaters and stuff, but I know that there's people that can't even go in their homes. So I would like us, like, I would rather than be able to go in their home and need blanket after blanket over me, but, you know, it's just the fact that we're just feeling like nothing's happening. And yes, stuff is happening, and I have called every, you know, I've heard every same story over and over again. I've seen every copied and pasted document from a brochure that I can read. But nothing's a true case study. Nothing's truly, how is it implemented on the ground when it needs to be happened? And like I've been saying, we cannot remove earthquakes. We cannot remove, we can't change the fault lines. But, you know, we can know from the future on how we can better assist ourselves by talking about what's not working. And, you know, just thanking them and not asking questions isn't enough. Like, ask what dollar amounts they've paid for. What type of examples? Ask for some case studies, you know? Get out, who have they helped, and what have they done for them? Because when I asked the question, I was told that nobody from Habitat for Humanity have been helped from Habitat for Humanity. I asked the question, if anybody's got the USDA grant. I can't get a clear answer. So as far as I know, and I've been told, no, besides just a hot water heater or something. I'd like to see some bigger stuff happening and more clear direction on like, okay, you have to have a contractor's bid. Well, you know, a contractor's not going to come out and just do the work without being paid. They have to buy supplies. So they can't just go months of doing this labor's work and not have anything. So there's so much more going on than just getting grants and funding and us up the line, you know? And I just wanted to come and like talk to you guys about that. And one thing that I'm trying to have at the community center, and if anybody wants to help or give opinions, I'm new to this community, on how to reach out to the community members, is having a roundtable discussion where everybody can hear different stories and different programs that they're going to, so we can better understand how to address these unmet needs that are lingering. How do we get them to go through? Because I don't understand why some projects are being submitted, and I don't know if they're on the agenda or not to the unmet needs committee. And I don't understand, I've called Humboldt Area Foundation.
It's just three minutes.
Oh, okay, sorry. So I didn't know. It's like alignment. So I was like, I guess we're done. So yeah, no, I would love to go discuss more, you know, I've been trying to give myself effort. Just trying to give my help to the community as much as I can.
Thank you very much. We're glad you're bushing all. Thank you for being here.
Hi, more, not for your council, but more for the general public. But I'm going to probably direct my comment to you, because Humboldt Area Foundation is not new to be making their comments to. Habitat for Humanity is not them. And I have asked for a report from Habitat to come to our board on the 27th of October, asking where the money went to specifically. I have gotten lots of calls from Ryo-Dell constituents and the difficulties that have happened, just as she has expressed. And so I do fully expect that report to come, and hopefully to give a detailed list of what is going on and what is happening. So I do hear the, hear the, you know, frustrations. I hear it equally throughout Ryo-Dell constituents, as well as some constituents in the Heinzville, Carlatta area. And I hope that through that report on the 27th, that hopefully we can maybe have an easier process that will happen with the, you know, the phone calls and the reporting and the documentation and this and that. So I'm not going to apologize, because it's not our system, but I do hope to get to a better, a way to get some answers. So I just want to report on that.
Appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Fred? I have a couple of questions. First of all, I was just talking with my friend the other night about global warming, increasing the pressure systems, and it affects our earthquakes and will be more violent, more often, and but Saturday morning we have one. So my question is, on here, I didn't see any, is there an opportunity to volunteer with this program? Or any positions, and especially in times of disaster?
I can represent that, okay. So with the community organizations active in disaster COAD, or possibly with the Long-Term Recovery Group, or there might be opportunities to volunteer with one of those entities? Or some of the organizations that were on that list that are partners with the Long-Term Recovery? A number of those organizations have opportunities for volunteering.
I appreciate that. This is absolutely just sad. Maybe they catch a soft car, and they're only not going to have it. Last year was like reliable, and we ended up with a lot of these switches because of it. Thank you.
Any other questions from members of the public? Any emails, hand raised? If any other questions you can talk to or staff?
I wanted to thank you for coming and telling your story at the meeting. I do think it is important to hear those stories. I spend a good amount of time at our Community Resource Center with the disaster case management team that's going on down there. I've heard various stories from all over the spectrum, to the worst you can imagine, to it took some time and patience, but it was successful in the long run, and everything in between. So I do think that awareness is key, and I do know what's going on a little bit, just a little bit. I'm informed. I did my best. And we all do. But again, I think a big step in that is coming and telling your story on the record. So thank you for doing that. And that's it.
So I'd like to, again, thank the council and the public for the comments on this matter. I just did want to say for clarification that the case management process is confidential. So details about, you know, individuals and that are shared out, even, even what you might think are, you know, small details, because it's a small community. So just so clear on that.
Thank you.
And I was just going to note, there are a number of different organizations. We're one of many, but I know there are many others, including Humboldt Made and Changing Tides, and the Arcata House Partnership, and the Family Resource Center, and others that I'm sure would be happy to come and provide a presentation to the council as well, if that was something that you're interested in in the future.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much for that opportunity.
Absolutely. Thanks for taking the time to come down to Ryo-Dell. Now we will move... Now we will move on to unmet transit need of public hearing. Page ninety-four on our packets.
Thank you, Mayor Gardens, members of the council. So this is an annual unmet transit needs hearing. And I believe we do have a gentleman, uh, here on, either on the Zoom, Stephen Luther, uh, to, uh, help present the item and, uh, see if there's any, uh, unmet needs if the community wants to make sure that the, uh, the city and whole county association of governments is, uh, is aware of it.
Thank you, City Manager Nop, and good evening, Mayor and Council. This is Stephen Luther, the Associate Planner for the Humboldt County Association of Governments. And, uh, prior to opening the hearing, I just wanted to, uh, provide some more context and information about the state of the regional transit system. Um, so you, you and the public have that information. So just gonna share, um, a short presentation. And, uh, beginning with, uh, this outline, I'll, I'll go through some numbers in, uh, the front portion and, uh, go through those fairly quickly and then get into some of the service updates that are happening. Um, so this hearing is about the use of the local transportation funds, which is a major source of funding for public transit. And I've just highlighted the amount that is allocated to the city of Riedel in the last two fiscal, fiscal years. Um, and the amount that is used for streets and roads is, uh, around eighty-eight thousand out of the hundred and forty-two thousand total. So around sixty-two percent, um, is used for streets and roads. And that is possible when you make a finding that there are no unmet transit needs that are reasonable to meet. So the Humboldt Transit Authority is the largest transit provider and the one that provides service to Riedel. Um, these are some top level numbers about their current performance with four hundred and forty-six thousand passengers, uh, every year and about sixty thousand are using the Jack Pass for Cal Poly Humboldt. Uh, a hundred and thirteen thousand use a monthly pass. And this is a view of the total ridership, uh, for each of the transit services that the HTA runs. Um, and you can see the, the large decrease during COVID. But the story here is that ridership is increasing and, uh, growing year over year. And similar story for the Arcata and Mad River Transit System, as well as the City of Fortuna Transit. Um, so these slides are just to show some of the performance standards for how we evaluate the efficiency of transit. Um, and determine whether an unmet need is reasonable to meet. So this first one is the fare box return ratio. And you can see the overall performance for these services over the last year. Another, uh, standard is the operating subsidy per passenger trip, which can be used to measure the cost effectiveness. And I should also mention that all these figures and graphs you're seeing are from the Transit Development Plan, which is a, a five-year transit plan that HCOG has, uh, recently completed. And so there's a lot more information in that plan. And then we also have the passenger trips per vehicle service hour, which can measure the productivity. And we can see that it is starting to improve as more riders are using services. So getting into some of the new developments, HTA is leading a brand update to, uh, brand all these various, uh, services and lines that each have their own bus tickets and individual look with under the brand Ride Humboldt. And this will make it easier for people to choose transit and to transfer between these different lines. And one of the main ways that will be possible is through these credit card validators that are now on all the HTA buses. And it allows you to use any, um, debit or credit card with the, uh, tap to pay symbol. And it'll charge you two dollars, uh, over the next two hours. So you can just, you can transfer from, uh, say like the Willow Creek bus onto the RTS. And if you use the same card within two hours, it will just continue under that two dollar fare. Uh, it's a, it's a great value and just makes it a lot easier for people to use. And then there is also still a fifty dollar a month, uh, all services pass. Another exciting development is microtransit, which is like an Uber or Lyft for public transit. And the idea is that the dial ride service would open up to the public. And it would just be as easy as creating an account on a smartphone or logging into a website or making a phone call to request a ride. It could pick you up around fifteen minutes. And the, they're looking at piloting this type of service to serve Samoa and McKinleyville. Uh, there's potential in Fortuna and, um, we'll see where the, where the pilot goes. There are also a few, uh, new services that I just wanted to mention. In Arcata, they have a green and gold route that is serving more frequently between Valley West and Cal Poly. And then also the Uroch Tribe Transit has, uh, restarted a service going from Orleans to Hoopa to Willow Creek. Another one to look out for is the Redwood Coast Express, which will be a direct service from Eureka to Ukiah. And that will fill in, uh, a gap in public transit between those areas and allow folks to connect to other transit, uh, down in Sonoma County and beyond. And that is anticipated to start in January two thousand twenty-four. And just to conclude with a few of the known transit needs that we hear often are for more frequent service, for them to come sooner than once every hour or so, um, to provide service on Sunday, later night service on Friday and Saturday. And those two, two needs have been determined reasonable to meet through the process last year. So we are working with HTA to fund those. And another one that is being worked on is earlier and later service. So an, an earlier morning weekday service. And the major need for that is hiring drivers. So just wanna plug that HTA is looking for bus drivers and it's a great benefited position that they provide training for. Uh, so check that out if folks are interested. And here's my contact info. We also have an online survey that is live right now. Um, and really encourage folks to take that if they don't speak at this public hearing and I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Stephen. Um, so we will open it up. Um, I would just like to quickly make a comment that, um, this week is, um, week not to drive. Don't drive your car week. And, um, you know, you, you commented that you were talking, you know, you're looking at earlier service. I actually got the bus schedule out because, well, I pledged to not drive. And I actually am supposed to be at an HTA meeting tomorrow morning at nine o'clock and the first bus that comes to Riedel is nine o'clock. So I wouldn't make it. So I'm gonna zoom in so I can, um, you know, stick to my pledge. But that is one of the, um, one of the things that definitely is very important, um, to try and sort out a way, and I understand about needing drivers, absolutely, to, um, have earlier routes. Because people who, most people who work in Riedel probably don't work in Riedel. And, um, so, you know, you don't want to have to go to Eureka the night before so you can get to work on time. Um, so that's an important thing. And, um, a different, some way to reach out to, um, to the community to let them know flyers, um, maybe on the, uh, bus, you know, uh, uh, um, a poster or something on the bus, um, talking to the community about unmet needs so that they know, you know, this is a moment when you need to, you know, speak to that issue and, uh, come into the, uh, HCOG meetings or the HTA meetings that are, you know, public meetings. And, um, so, so that they know, because a lot of people don't think they have that voice. They don't know that they can actually, you know, put it out there that, hey, this is, this is something that's necessary. And so just different ways of getting the message out would be, um, something to think about as well. Uh, Councilmember War?
Uh, I have no question.
Councilmember Wilson?
No question.
Councilmember Woodall?
No question.
Mayor Coaten?
No question.
That's easy. Any member of the public?
I would love to ride the transit system, but like you said, I would have to leave at six o'clock here and then I would have to catch the bus on HTA to go out to Myrtle Town to get to my job. And there's no way I could do that. And now the gas is starting to rise. Um, it's about two hundred and fifty dollars a month for me to try to work every day. So it would be nice to be able to catch a bus at, you know, at a decent hour and to be able to get to work. And even the Eureka bus system is, is hard to navigate. And so if there was an easier way to navigate or if those buses could travel, uh, more than once an hour, it would be helpful. And then I would be less likely to drive and ride the bus. I do enjoy riding the bus. I used to ride the bus from Arcata to CR every day to go to school. And, um, it was great, great to save gas and to just not have to drive. So a little bit of that's my.
Thank you very much. Any emails? Any hand raised? There are actually many here. Possible. I'm gonna get that in my page nine four. Here we are.
Yeah, there's sleep classes at a public hearing.
Brett's staff to send in comments to you.
Okay, I mean, we'll close the hearing, um, and, um, staff will send their report to HTA. Thank you, Stephen, for being here. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
And we'll move on to the session. I'm sorry. Authorize the proposed location for the Gateway Outdoor Exercise, page one hundred in our packets. Thank you, Brad.
Thank you, Mayor. And members of the council, um, so the council may recall, um, the exercise station is part of the Clean California Grant. Um, uh, was aimed to be installed at Memorial Park across the street here from City Hall. Uh, and working with our, um, architect on the project and trying to find the exact correct location. Um, every time it was placed or moved, there were just multiple conflicts in terms of placing it in the memorial park. So, uh, primarily tree root problems, uh, and then also there is an overhead, a power line under some of the only areas that, uh, are potentially feasible without, uh, injuring roots and that sort of thing. Um, so, uh, we did try as hard as we could to make it work, uh, in a meeting with the ad hoc committee of, uh, Mayor Barnes, Mayor Protown, Carter, uh, we discussed some of the alternate locations, uh, for the site. Uh, and, uh, the ad hoc committee, uh, settled in on the location roughly on page one hundred and one of your packet on the map. And that's at, uh, the, what historically has been called the, um, Triangle Garden Park. Uh, historically it has a couple of other different names, Blue Star, uh, Triangle Park and whatnot, but historically it has been referred to as Triangle Garden Park. Uh, so this, uh, specific location is, you know, free from these, these hazards, uh, should be relatively easy to make a connection. ADA, uh, path, uh, connection, uh, for the site. Um, so, uh, with that, um, you know, it is outside of the scope of the original grant through Caltrans. We did, um, uh, ask for and apply for a, um, uh, a scope change which, uh, was approved. So this location is, uh, acceptable to, uh, to the funding agency. Uh, and so, uh, we are just proposing at this point in time to, uh, relocate the facility, uh, to this location. Um, see if there's any comments, uh, from the council. One of the options would be to, uh, move the Blue Star Memorial Rock or keep it in its current location, uh, to, uh, to facilitate the park. And certainly the, the council can, uh, uh, opine and provide input into that. Uh, but we're eager to get this out to final design with the architect and then out to this as possible.
Thank you, City Manager. Um, Mayor Coaten and I were at the, uh, meeting with, um, the city manager, uh, talking about this and, um, that seemed to be the best place for it. Um, the discussion was more probably more centered around whether it would seem disrespectful because of the Blue Star Monument, um, and if that was the feeling, um, to move the Blue Star Monument over to Memorial Park, which kind of actually falls under the idea of Memorial. And to the front, next to the other, the memorial, uh, plaques there, um, so that it would be seen and very visual and on, right on Main Street. Um, and so that's, you know, I just, so we got the background of what we were thinking when we were, uh, having a discussion about it. And, uh, the fact that it's really the only place that the footprint of the exercise equipment would, would work out. So I'm open up a question.
Number one, the, one of the garden clubs quite a bit, went through quite a bit to get the Blue Star Memorial right where it is. They had to come and improve it, prove and make sure that, um, Bob was right. And it's a great place because there's been a lot of cars stopped right here. And they can see that and they can also go across to the Shell Station. And, um, so I wouldn't be for moving it. It's been there a lot of years and a lot of people, you know, did a lot to get it there. I was wondering, um, you have, you have this right sitting on the background of the garden area. Could, and I will provide a look at that. They, could, I talked to Kyle about this earlier. Could it be moved over? Or if we'll decide like where the picnic table is or a little bit farther back so it's not sitting right on top of the gardens? Yes.
Yeah, I'll, I'll just chime in. This is a rough approximation. Uh, it can easily be moved, I think, in a, uh, northerly direction. Uh, I just wouldn't move it, uh, further south or, or too much to the west, uh, just because of the trees. But it can be moved, uh, north and a little bit northwest.
But it can be moved back a little bit too.
Yeah, so away from, away from the flower garden. And then the ADA access would, would, uh, instead of going through the current location of the Blue Star, it can wrap around the side. And I, I don't think that that would be.
I would kind of like to see that just because like Jenny does a lot of work on her own time, making the gardens look nice. And I think you have those right behind. But that's my opinion. If I'd be happy, but if, you know, if you could take a look at it. No, I, I can't just agree with it.
Are you ready? Um, Councilmember War?
Um, yeah, I'm with you. Uh, moving the Blue Star is not an option in my mind. But after getting an air call from a child or children of one of the residents where it was going to go, I appreciate the move. Um, they weren't happy with the placement in Memorial Park just being so close to their homes. So, um, yeah, I absolutely love the, the new placement. If we can keep the Blue Star there and, um, give it the respect it deserves at the same time.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yeah, I, I agree with what basically what's been said. You, you folks have gone on, made thoughts of this for, what's the best option to do it? Um, I don't think, I don't think I'm moving a lot of the property. But the, um, but it sounds like you did it pretty good. So I'm, I'm supportive of your proposal.
Thank you. And it wasn't, the idea wasn't to move the rock. The idea was if everyone thought it was disrespectful, that's how that actually even came up. Mayor Coaten?
I am happy to leave the rock and move the thing.
I am happy to leave the rock and move the thing a couple feet and everybody's happy and yay, yay.
A lot of appreciate this.
No, absolutely. We might not be able to, we gotta hear it.
Yeah, absolutely. So do we need to vote on just moving it to the Triangle Park? Move it back? Move it away a little bit from the flowers? The flowers and the Blue Star Memorial, but to have it placed in Triangle Park? Your motion for that? I'll make the motion. And I'll second. We have motion and second. Motion carries five zero.
And Mayor.
I didn't ask. Public. Do you have any comments or questions? No, thank you. Thank you. And thank you for accepting my call and for missing that. Any hands raised? Any emails? Okay, thank you. Now, motion passes five zero. All right. And final item discussion on the management analysis position and possible changes to personnel allocation in the city of Riedel.
Thank you.
Page 102.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Barnes and members of the council. This will be just a very short item. The staff is looking at kind of the workload in, over the next couple of years of what we have to accomplish in terms of earthquake recovery because the city has a number of projects, multimillion dollar liabilities associated with earthquake recovery on the infrastructure, public infrastructure side. So water, wastewater, roads, all this are still, many projects still remain to be put forward. In addition to just the ever increasing requirements of the public works department in general, whether that regulatory compliance of wastewater and whatnot. That, you know, we have definitely a need for some additional resources in, in this area. The analyst position is definitely one that, you know, I think is an important one to have, certainly to help push economic development. But I think with a little bit of rejuggling of the existing staff resources, that we can still maintain forward momentum on the economic development plan and some of the other important tasks that are not earthquake related. That being said, we're still kind of investigating what we think would be the best option for the city as a whole moving forward, which includes potential changes in staffing in public works or potentially contracting out specific functions that might be better aided, not necessarily by a full-time position, but contracted out, you know, well-qualified labor for specific functions across the spectrum of activities that we need to perform. So there are a couple options that we're looking at and and so I just wanted to bring this to the council's attention so that the whole group knows kind of where we're at because we just passed this budget. It wasn't that long ago, three months ago. And we're already trying to figure out what kind of the next steps, the best next steps are given the volume of various diverse projects that we need to be accomplishing across the board, not just in public works and economic development and in labor and in other areas that definitely need additional attention. So with that, just if there's any questions or comments, otherwise staff can bring an item back in the near future to either create a new classification or potentially just some options in terms of contracting out work.
Thank you, city manager. Councilor War?
No question.
Mayor Potem? No questions. Councilmember Wilson?
Yeah, you don't have a cost, which is what you would do.
So the idea is that it would be all net neutral to the budget. So it wouldn't be, so if, for example, one of the options is to create a project management specialist. And so likely the classification would remain the same as the analyst. The analyst would go away and then a new different job classification would be created specifically for the work. But again, we have so much work to be done on different fronts that it might make sense to rethink that piece of pie. But it's not, the intent is absolutely not to increase costs to work within the already allocated budget.
Because my feeling would be that, are you looking to create a full-time position to do this public work? Is that what you're hearing here?
Yeah, so right now we have an unfilled analyst position. And so the idea is what is the more efficient use of the resources? And would it be better placed towards that activity? Which again, we don't have a full-time public works manager. And there's just a large amount of work that has to be done just to keep the city, city's head above water, so to speak, moving forward. So.
So like, I guess I'm having a hard time understanding why we have the job, the city manager is the public work director. And that part of that is the, that part of the job is to do, is to do that, you know, these administrative functions where you have a sewer superintendent, a sewer superintendent, a development director. To have some, to add another full-time position that is here for like short-term, short-term projects or getting rather than contract those out. Because you get the, you get the business load, you know, your whatever, whatever the salary is plus your, your load to make that on. And then it goes on in perpetuity that we now have another position to fill. Yeah, I would lean more to the idea that we would have put these costs on the short term. There's probably one, two, three, four, let's get those done, you know, behind it. Can't be done with it. As far as eliminating the analyst position, the one that you want to eliminate, we could, I have a problem eliminating that. We can put it in the budget. So we have a place with this amount of money for that position. Well, we don't need that position unless eliminated. And you still have the funds in your budget to go back and determine if, short-term, just by projects, that we allocate money to do the project and then be done with it. There's no, you know, that may be time when you're needed, that kind of stuff. This might come. We're making a decision tonight.
Good, thank you. Councilmember Woodall? So do you think if we contracted them out, the projects, do you think that would be cheaper or, I mean, just a guess?
I wouldn't necessarily call it cheaper, but certainly, and Councilmember Wilson is correct, some of these are very time-limited projects that don't necessarily need a full-time position. So that's certainly something to consider. But certainly in the reorganization that occurred, you know, 10 or 12 years ago, where the city really downsized, you know, public works was, was very much, I think, part of that downsizing in the past. And so there's still a lot of, I guess, I don't know if this is the correct word, but bird dogging of projects that has to get done, whether it's through a contractor or whether it's through consistent staffing for those, those types of projects. And certainly when we lose staffing or individuals, they're also taking, you know, their experience and their, their time and knowledge. And so the more hands we have on deck to help kind of keep these things arranged, I think is beneficial in the long run. But so those are, those are some of the issues that we're weighing as a staff in terms of what is the best option moving, moving forward for the community.
So if you decided to go after that, I'd like to see before I would consider what a job description would look like and also their qual, what their qualifications they would need for this position.
Correct. So yeah, so the council would, yeah.
Would see that before we decide?
Yeah.
Okay. Those are my two questions. Okay, thank you. I definitely just want to what Councilmember Woodall said is that just by having a, a city employee, the continuity between, you know, starting with this project and going through all of the projects and the continuity is kind of what's important. I mean, from your perspective, I'm just trying to.
Yeah, absolutely. But at the same time, the resources are restricted. We can't have a perfect solution of both the additional staffing and the additional expert contract assistance. So we do have to just kind of suss out what is the most effective for the dollars that we have available to implement. And again, it isn't even necessarily, it isn't even exclusive to public works. So the city needs to be applying for additional grants as the infrastructure bill rolls forward in terms of doling out additional funding. There are projects like housing mitigation grants and dollars that are available that the city should be somewhat, you know, competitive for. But we don't get them unless we apply for them. And so, so can that be done through part-time contracts? Probably. Can we find the right person? It's a huge question on both sides, whether it's, it's a, it's a, whether it's a full-time position or whether it's a part-time contract, you know, term limited contract. So, so just even arranging this and trying to come up with the correct structure, there's a, the bigger challenge is really filling these and getting this work done with the correct people who know and have the experience to do that. So there are advantages and disadvantages to both sides. And certainly we can't necessarily meet all of the need, but, but we do have this position funded in the budget and maybe it's time to rethink our, our strategy moving forward in terms of of the more near-term, two, three-year, you know, time horizon.
So you'll be bringing us back up the proposal.
Yeah, so the idea is that the council can comment generally. So I can hear the input from the council, the public can hear the input from the council. And then we'll be, you know, continuing to discuss this and coming back with a proposal for the, for the council.
Okay. Is there anyone in the public who wants to comment on this item? Any? Okay, then we will look forward to, you bring it back. Everything good? Awesome. Okay, so that is that. And we will move on to council reports. I would like to ask first of all, would we all, do we want to have a word of the seat that we all agree to bring back the Seventh Street project? Oh, yes, yes. So city manager, if you put that on the available agenda, please. And, yeah, Potem?
Well, okay. So two weeks ago, I attended the CalCities annual conference in Sacramento. I learned a lot of things and I said a lot of things. No, I, I really tried to use that opportunity to spread our story around to whoever would listen to me about the earthquakes and the storms. And I got to hear what they said, but I really wanted them to hear what we went through too. Because a lot of people from bigger cities, they don't know. So some of them know now. This past Saturday, I participated in the river cleanup put on by the Scotia, Riedel, Kiwanis. So I wanted to thank members of the community who showed up for that because there were a lot. And the Kiwanis for sponsoring it. We got a lot of trash out of there. It was gross, but we did it. And now when the rains come, we won't have a bunch of garbage washed down the river and it's the ocean. So that is good for everyone. Upcoming this Friday, there is a Chamber of Commerce meeting at noon. It feels too early, but it is Christmas time at the Chamber of Commerce. We are doing a lot of Christmas discussing. So doesn't feel tight time, but it is. Lastly, October 14th is a Saturday. I will be representing the city of Riedel at a Great Redwood Trail community event from 11:00 AM to 3:00 PM. It is at the Dyerville Overlook, which is just south of here. It is exit 663 because it's kind of hard to find your directions there. It's going to be a really fun community event with lots of interactive activities, space painting for kids, food truck, you know, fun times and celebrating the Great Redwood Trail and all these little offshoot trails that we have and that Humboldt County is known for. So come see me, come say hi, come try to win a prize at my table because our prizes are really cool this year. Also, that event is still looking for a couple of volunteers just to help manage parking and things like that. So if anybody's interested in volunteering, shoot me an email and I will put you in touch with the right people. And I think that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember War?
I wish I had something to say, but it seems like the end of September was a good time to cancel meetings. Nothing from HCO until the end of this month.
Thank you. Councilmember Woodall? Councilmember Wilson?
I don't have anything to say about it. HCO, HCO management approved a letter in the Kentucky government. The governor, Mr. Newsome. I think that's good. Something out next week is, I need to go and see what they have. They, they did select a place that's semi-organic. It's to a place called Cold Creek, Mallow, this low. Ucaia. They used to be a, like leading organic cannabis processing facility that was making money doing that. So they're going to try process the organic coming out here. Most of the same way. Be a good thing.
All right, thank you. And I also went to the annual conference for the Lego Cities and I learned a lot and I talked a lot as well.
Yes.
And I've, you know, there were two of us big moms that were really, you know, like people know how, how things really were up here, how, what's going on up here. And I know for sure people hurt us.
Yeah.
And so that was a positive thing. I will be going down to the 14th of the Great Redwood Trail. And and I appreciate everyone in the community who came out this past weekend and did the river cleanup. Did you cook, bake the treats?
That was me.
I knew it was you. They were very good. So that in itself is worth coming out to pick up a little trash. She's a really good baker. She's a great baker. And I have an HTA meeting tomorrow morning. It will be, I will be zooming in here as I can't get there without driving. So I will be here. So anyone, it's a public meeting. It wants to come, it will be on the, on the Zoom. And I think that's all that I have. And our next regularly scheduled meeting is October 17th at 6:00 PM. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So, yeah, motion. There's second.
Getting adjourned.